Good evening and welcome to the Rosemount City Council Regular Meeting. Today is Tuesday, May 18th, 2021. If you would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First of all, are there any additions, corrections to the agenda?
No, sir.
So with no changes, anyone wish to move motion?
Move the agenda.
We have a motion and second on the floor, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, the agenda's adopted. First item before us, we have one presentation tonight, our proclamation. I'll turn this over to our city administrator, Mr. Martin.
I was the council, pleased to be in front of the council tonight to declare May 16th through 22nd National Public Works Week in Rosemount. Our public works director, city engineer, is currently managing the end of another meeting, and so I'll take this one on behalf of Mr. Erickson. But Rosemount residents should be proud of the 26-member team we have in our public works department. These folks really provide, at some points, very visible service that we all rely heavily on, and other times, very kind of invisible service that we just expect to work well and expect to have happen, but we kind of sometimes can take for granted, frankly, in 21st century suburban America. So, you know, these are our plow operators, these are the folks that keep our parks and planter boxes and flowers and sign areas looking pretty, and these are the folks that make sure that our sewer and water system functions safely and adequately and correctly on a daily basis as well. So, really proud of this team, you know, these folks specifically in the midst of COVID, much like our public safety officers, had no ability to change their day-to-day life. These aren't work-from-home individuals, these are folks that have to show up every day, that have to make sure that the city keeps providing the level of service that is expected, and they did it, and they did it admirably, and so we're proud to proclaim this week in their honor. And so, in your packet is the list of the names of the team members. I won't list them, but we just want each of them to know that we appreciate them and appreciate their service, and Mayor, I believe you've got a proclamation in front of you to read if you would be so inclined.
Yes, and the proclamation states, whereas public work services provided in the city of Rosemount are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support and understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as water, sewers, streets, and public buildings, and whereas the health and safety and comfort of our Rosemount residents greatly depends on these facilities and services, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities as well as their planning, design, and construction is vitally dependent on the efforts and skill of public works officials. Now therefore, as Mayor of the city of Rosemount, I hereby do proclaim May 16th through May 22nd, 2021, as National Public Works Week in the city of Rosemount. I call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life, dated 18th of May, 2021. And with that, I'd also like to say thank you, public works employees, and like Logan stated, a year ago when we went into COVID, it was a lot of uncertainty, and our public works officials along with public safety were the ones that nothing changed. They had to be out there every day. Thank you. That concludes the presentations. We'll now move to public comment. Anyone wishing to make a statement or ask a question of council may do so at this time. And as all our meetings, we have people attending or may attend on Zoom. Do you see anyone raising a hand?
Not at this time. We do have individuals online, though.
Okay. So if there are no questions, comments, and if anyone's here for another item on the agenda, we'll allow you to speak at that time. If there are no items or no one wishing to speak, we'll move on to the consent agenda. First of all, are there any items anyone wishes to pull? Go ahead, sir.
Six G.
Any other items? If there are no other individual items anyone wishes to pull, anyone would like to move a motion?
Agenda with items six A through H with G removed for further discussion.
I'll second.
We have a motion on the floor, council member Weisensel, second, council member Freski. Any further comments? And seeing none, please take the roll.
Weisensel?
Aye.
Block?
Aye.
Droste?
Aye.
Essler?
Aye.
Freski?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero, so we'll now move on to five G, which is youth commission appointments. I'll turn this over to council member Weisensel.
So I simply pulled this for recognition before I make the motion to acknowledge two additional members being added to our youth commission. We appointed 16 at our last meeting, and the two individuals I'll name here in the motion. So with that, I'll move the motion to appoint Miana Rhodes and Jaida Berman to the youth commission.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor, council member Weisensel, second, council member Block. Any comments? And seeing none, please take the roll.
Block?
Aye.
Droste?
Aye.
Essler?
Aye.
Freski?
Aye.
Weisensel?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero, and that concludes all items under the consent agenda. We'll now move on to public hearings, and we have one scheduled this evening, which is approval of a resolution adopting a modification to a development program in Development District Number One and approving a tax increment financing plan for the Osprey Tax Increment Financing District. And I'm glad I didn't have to say that all in one sentence. So with that, I'll turn this over to our economic development coordinator, Eric Van Oss.
Mr. Mayor. So the hearing for us today is for seafried industrial properties. They're planning to develop a logistical distribution facility in the business park about 400,000 square feet. It would greatly increase the truck traffic and access onto 42, so as part of the city approvals, we are moving forward to require a road with access onto three, which would require both the road construction costs and then also right-of-way dedication from the developer. Due to the additional cost, the city would like to use TIF financing to help reimburse our cost for the road, as well as any additional right-of-way costs for the developer. At the previous council or port meeting, the Port Authority approved the resolution adopting the modification for the development program. Rebecca Kurtz from Ellers is here to answer any questions regarding the TIF plan itself, and I'll turn it over to her.
Thank you. Again, Rebecca Kurtz from Ellers. Just a quick overview for the public of what is being considered with the TIF plan. As outlined, tax increment financing is that ability to use that increase from the new tax base and direct it to eligible costs. As Eric outlined, it would be used for construction of the road along with some reimbursement to the developer for some right-of-way expenses. We've outlined that in the TIF district and the TIF plan, it is the development of about 417,000 square feet of a warehouse distribution facility that includes outside storage and access to rail. The type of district that is being proposed is an economic development district being used specifically for that manufacturing, warehouse, storage, and distribution purpose. Under state statutes, an economic development district has a maximum term of nine years of tax increment. However, with any type of tax increment district, you always have the ability to decertify it early to the extent that obligations have been paid prior to that nine-year maximum term. You can see the location of the TIF district in the business park outlined by the red parcels shown on this map. Again, as a reminder, with tax increment, they will be paying, the property will pay full taxes based on its assessed value. We are estimating that that could be in the area of $974,000. However, there are still state school district market value taxes and then the base value taxes that will go to city, county, and school district. So while they will pay their full estimated tax value, it is only a portion of that that is going to be able to be redirected to assist with reimbursing for the road and the right-of-way expenses. We have set a maximum budget in the TIF plan of just under $3.4 million. Again, this does not create an obligation if the TIF plan is approved after the public hearing this evening. That is setting a maximum. The obligation will be before the council at a later date after those terms have been negotiated with the developer. We're just outlining the tool and maximum budgets that would be available to create that financing or to enter into an obligation for reimbursement. We have gone through the process, including notifying the county and school district of the TIF plan, providing them a copy of that draft plan along with potential fiscal impacts. A public hearing notice was published. As mentioned earlier this evening, the Port Authority did approve the resolution approving the modification to the development program for this TIF district, which brings us to where we are right now with holding a public hearing. After the public hearing, if you chose to do so, there is a resolution in your packet that you could consider that would establish the tax increment financing district. Again, that puts the tool in place but does not create the obligation. If you do choose to move forward with establishing the district, our next steps are for the city to consider negotiating the terms of the agreement with the developer, and then a final contract for private development would come before the city council at a later date. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions, and I'll be available during the public hearing.
Thank you. I neglected to explain process, so we've just had staff and our consultant explain the project. We'll go through questions here, and then I'll open it to the public. If you have any questions, comments, this is a public hearing. Once we close it, then we'll act on the motion. So at this time, council members, any questions regarding this project or TIF district? You've done such a wonderful job, you can see we're speechless. So with that, like I stated, this is a public hearing, so I'll now open the podium for anyone wishing to speak on this topic. And are you able to see anyone online raising a hand?
There is nobody online at the moment.
Okay. So we'll wait about one minute.
Sounds good.
Just in case. So again, as it was explained, this is setting up the framework. The action will be on down the road if we have a development agreement. So now that it's 7:14 and we have no one wishing to speak, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Sir.
We have a motion and second on the floor, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, the public hearing's closed. I'll now move it back to council for any final comments or questions regarding the TIF district. And no questions. So with that, if anyone would like to move motion on this issue, go ahead, sir.
I'll move the, let's see what they got here. Motion.
Number two.
Motion to approve a resolution adopting a modification to the development program for Development District Number One and approving a tax increment financing plan for the Osprey Tax Increment Financing District.
We have a motion on the floor, council member Weisensel, second, council member Essler. Any further discussion? And seeing none, would please take the roll.
Droste?
Aye.
Essler?
Aye.
Freski?
Aye.
Weisensel?
Aye.
Block?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero, and that concludes this item, and thank you for your presentation this evening. So that concludes all items under public hearing. We do not have any unfinished business, so we'll move on to new business, which is a request by Susan Stein for a minor subdivision and rezoning. And with that, I'll turn this over to our community development director, Mr. Kainberger.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, thank you. Mr. Nemcek has the night off tonight, so you get to have me walk you through his memo on his behalf and hopefully answer any questions to your satisfaction. So Doug, back in the booth, I'm going to use the overhead cam for a map to show where the property is as well as the proposed minor subdivision for you this evening. Looks like he'll get that pulled up here just one second. So I'm going to start kind of walking through the memo that Anthony had pulled together here for discussion this evening. So the item that we'll be discussing is a request by Susan Stein to subdivide the existing 18.37-acre parcel located at 3820-120th Street West into three lots within a new subdivision titled Dancing Waters. So you can see the location of the property on the cam and the monitors there before you. So as a part of this, it's required requirement to seek a rezone of that property from its current designation of AG, which is our agricultural district, to RR, which is rural residential. So at the end of that action, the subdivision would create two new lots in addition to a lot that will incorporate the existing house on that property. And then the third lot or one of the lots will be planted as an unbuildable outlot that shall be combined with an adjacent parcel located at 12282 Coffee Trail as a condition of the recommended approval this evening. And just to note that both the planning commission and staff are recommending approval of both components of this request, subject to the conditions outlined in the attached memo. So again, I noted that the planning commission did hold a public hearing at its regular meeting on April 27th of this year. Commission asked a couple of questions. They are outlined in the packet in front of you there, and those were all answered to their satisfaction. Couple of questions surrounding location of future structure development as well as potential flooding in there. There is no concerns from staff or from the applicant who also had testified on behalf of the questions at the public hearing for the planning commission. Couple other items to note as a part of this is that the request tonight is similar to one reviewed by the planning commission back in 2019, in which the land immediately west of the subject parcel was rezoned from AG to rural residential and then planted into a three-lot subdivision. So this is a very similar circumstance to the neighboring parcel. And one piece that I did want to note on that is the reason for the rezoning or why that makes sense is that with the recently adopted 2040 comp plan that the city concluded is that this will bring the zoning map into compliance or conformance with that comp plan. So it's very much in line with what is recommended within the comp plan or what's outlined in there, and we would expect to see that continue along this area of the community. So again, I'm going to pull up the plat here. Indicating that north is, get my finger on there, that way. And I did just highlight the subdivision boundary, so you can see the three lots that are being recommended for creation there. So I'm going to talk just a little bit about, I covered the rezoning component, but minor subdivision. That's what we call this type of an action that's being considered, which allows the city to waive some of the normal subdivision application requirements and to combine the preliminary and final plat review into one single action. While it does create a new buildable lot, the resulting rural lots will not be served by any new public improvements. Therefore, many of the city's standard plat application materials aren't necessary for this action this evening. In terms of the size of these lots, they will be 2.53, 3.52, and 11.86 acres in size, one of which will be planted as an outlot, and again noted that that is to be combined with the adjacent parcel. And then just kind of that last caveat there is that any site improvements or permits for home construction on that new buildable lot do need to comply with the city's zoning regulations, and of course, any and all building permits would be required as a part of that. One of the things that's unique about this area of Rosemount is that there are a number of wetlands on this area of the community, so the applicant has completed a wetland delineation report for the property, as is required under the city and state regulations. All identified wetlands have been documented for the proposed subdivision. Going through this in a little bit more detail than my understanding is customary for city council, there were a few questions that did arise between the planning commission meeting and the council meeting tonight, so just hitting on a few of those highlights as a part of this application for you this evening. Talking just a little bit about the lot standards and not to get overly detailed in that, again, the planning commission did hold a public hearing and did recommend approval of all of that, but everything that's being proposed here is in conformance with city ordinance. Nothing is truly out of the ordinary here, other than just kind of what you see on the plat map there. It follows very closely our minor subdivision process. So I'm not going to get into the lot standards or some of the other more nuanced components of it. Development fees that are addressed towards the end of the staff memo here. And as I noted earlier, although many of the standard fees will not apply to the proposed subdivision because it is not going to be served by any new public water or sewer services, there are two development fees that will apply as follows. The fee in Lua Park land dedication of $3,400 for one of the new buildable lots that will be paid during the building permit process, and then the surface water trunk area assessment for the Lebanon Hills sub watershed area of $3,772 per acre. So the total stormwater fee to be collected with the subdivision is $11,655, and this is all very standard and in conformance with city ordinance and our subdivision ordinance. So with all of that being said, staff and planning commission recommend approval of a rezoning and minor subdivision request for the Dancing Waters plat with the conditions attached in the memo. This recommendation for approval is based on the information provided by the applicant and reviewed within this report. And with that, I will do my best to answer any questions that the city council may have.
Thank you. I'll now open it up. Council members, any questions regarding the project? I know, I think some of the neighbors are here, are the landowners, so I will allow anyone to speak here on this if you would like. So please step to the podium, and if you have any additional comments, we did receive your email, thank you.
Thank you. First off, thank you to all the city staff that's worked with me, because I'm not a developer, obviously, and it's been like rollercoaster ride, but we've made it through, and I appreciate everybody's assistance in this. And we had talked about some of the things that came up between the planning commission and the council meeting, and I just wanted to reiterate, I don't know if I need to say it for the record because it's already in the packet, about the existing culvert for my driveway would be, the city had a pond agreement from years ago, so engineering and Anthony both said, yeah, the city, if it needs to be replaced in the future, that would be city. Then the other thing too about the stormwater fee, Anthony said that, for me as a small, you know, little person here, that it would be okay with the city to have me pay that because I'm closing with the people that are buying the two lots soon after I get it through the county. So if they, Anthony said it would be okay to do it then to give you, or you could hold a check, whatever works for you guys.
And you're on that understanding.
Yep, everything's been, Mr. Mayor, communicated, and I believe to the satisfaction of yourself.
Yeah, so if you have any more questions?
Well, I'll put our community development director on the spot here. So do you have control on that culvert, too?
It is addressed in the engineer's memo that's referenced within the staff memo here, that second piece regarding the...
So that understanding will take care of that?
Things should be memorialized.
Like you understand.
Yeah, and then the other piece of it was that one that was up by the road, and that would be future, as I think Anthony said something about as conditions warrant. He talked to Brian Erickson about that, so.
And Mr. Erickson's in the back of the room here, shaking his head, so we are looking good on that.
All right, so I have nothing else.
So wonderful. I'm glad things worked out in the long run.
You're now a developer.
Oh, it can be monumental, all the acronyms and terms and why we do what we do, and so I'm glad it was worked out, and I want to say thank you to the staff also. So any other questions, comments? If not, would anyone like to move a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do you want us to do both of them?
I'd do them separately.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to adopt an ordinance rezoning the subject property from AG Agricultural to RR Rural Residential.
Second.
We're doing them separately. Yep.
Second, we have a motion on the floor, council member Essler, second, council member Block. Any discussion? And seeing none, please take the roll.
Essler?
Aye.
Freski?
Aye.
Weisensel?
Aye.
Block?
Aye.
Droste?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero, go ahead if you'd...
I'll also make a motion to adopt a resolution approving a minor subdivision for Dancing Waters, subject to conditions.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor, council member Essler, second, council member Block. Any discussion? And seeing none, please take the roll.
Freski?
Aye.
Weisensel?
Aye.
Block?
Aye.
Droste?
Aye.
Essler?
Motion carries five zero, and that concludes this item, and best wishes to you as you move forward. And thank you. That concludes the one item under new business, and so now we'll move on to announcements. And first up, I'll turn over to our city administrator, Mr. Martin.
Thank you, members of the council. Two items tonight. First of all, I wanted to thank all the residents that came out last weekend to our Home and Business Expo, and also thank vendors, local businesses and regional businesses that came. Had a good event, good turnout, and we would intend to push it back next year to the March timeframe, which is a bit more of expo season, but just wanted to thank folks for another good home expo and mark their calendars for a date in March of next year, and stay tuned for that. Just the second item, Mayor, that I would mention, we've had some folks reach out with questions on the city's stance with the kind of recently changed Minnesota mask guidelines with the COVID pandemic. The city intends to continue to follow the state of Minnesota's lead really on that. We don't intend to, you know, have kind of a bifurcated system here in Rosemount, and so from what we've been able to interpret and understand, the state of Minnesota has allowed business owners to make their own standalone decisions on masks, and as I've been out in the community, I've noticed, you know, some businesses have kept signs up, others have taken signs down, and so I just wanted to convey the message that the city doesn't intend to make any sort of a different stance on masks than Minnesota has, and we've been consistent throughout this process to really stay locked up with the state of Minnesota. And so just pay attention to what businesses have asked for and what businesses are calling for, and, you know, provide each other with a little bit of grace and forgiveness as we all understand how it's going to look to maybe transition away from masks, and, you know, you've seen even here with council with the dividers and starting to go away from masks here even at a council level, but city hall-wise and for city events, we're continuing to... But city hall-wise and for city events, we're continuing to digest that and come out with a city, a city policy here in the in the near term. We're aware of Leprechaun Days and what that's going to do to Leprechaun Days, and hopefully it's all positive and all looking good. But just wanted to convey a short little message on on the mask situation, because it's kind of late breaking news and is a is a big change for all of us as we kind of hopefully near the end of this pandemic. So with that, Mayor, I have nothing else on my list, and I can turn it back to you.
Thank you. Upcoming on the calendar, the big item I should start out with is citywide cleanup is this Saturday from eight o'clock till noon. It's out at Dakota Technical College. Just remind people that's a construction zone out there, so be careful as you line up and enter and exit. But again, eight to noon, and I'm looking at our Parks and Recreation Director. I think online, if you have a question on what can be brought, example, tires, batteries, are they accepted this year?
They are.
They are. We have vendors out there. Go online, and you can see what's allowed and what is not allowed. We always, there's a charge for mattresses, refrigerators. I'm guessing two-by-fours will be free, though, correct? In the current lumber shortage. Or we'll probably see very few out there. But anyway, eight to twelve, and that's always important to the city. It's quite large. Upcoming other items on our calendar on Monday, May twenty-fourth, the utility commission meets at five thirty, and the Parks and Recreation Commission also meets that evening at seven P M. The planning commission meets on Tuesday, May twenty-fifth, beginning at six thirty P M. The youth commission meets on Wednesday, May twenty-sixth, beginning at two forty-five. They'll be planning their annual tree in Bloomfield Park, and then their meeting, regular meeting will begin at three forty-five in the banquet room at the community center. And then the next council work session and council meeting will be on Tuesday, June first, with the work session beginning at five P M. and city council meeting at seven P M. And if there are no further announcements or nothing missed, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Got a motion and second on the floor, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The meeting's adjourned. Thank you.